I'd like to call to order the regular monthly meeting of the Avon Board of Education at 7:00 PM on May 17th. To begin our meetings, we've gotten in the habit of doing a roll call. This way it's helpful, hopefully, for people who are joining us for the first time, just so we can acquaint you with everybody that's on the stage here. I will start with myself. I am Deb Schut, the chair. Jay Spivak, our vice chair.
I'm present, thanks Deb.
Thank you. Jeffrey Fleishman, our secretary.
I'm present, thank you.
Jackie Blaia.
Present, thank you.
Laura Young.
Present, thank you.
Lisa Semenera.
Present, thank you.
Lynn Katz.
Present, thank you Deb.
Phage Singh.
Present, thank you Deb.
And Liz Summercorn.
Present, thank you.
Thank you. Now moving on to our administrators. Dr. Bridget Carnemola, our superintendent.
Present, thank you.
Dr. Donna Nessler-Rusak, Assistant Superintendent.
Present, thank you.
Mr. Roberto Medick, Director of Human Resources.
Present, thank you.
Susan Russo, our Business Manager.
Present, thank you.
And Shirley Moy, our Executive Assistant to the Superintendent and our Board Clerk. All right, thank you Shirley. If you would all join me in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, thank you everyone. In lieu of reading the mission statement tonight, I've been authorized by unanimous consent of this board to speak to our work together. The Avon Board of Education and the Avon Public Schools, together known as the District, value diversity of backgrounds, beliefs, and perspectives, and are committed to promoting an equitable and inclusive environment. All students and staff, regardless of race, religion, color, national origin, ancestry, age, sex, sexual orientation, disability, gender identity or expression, or any other characteristic, have the right to access opportunities and supports available through the District's educational programs. The District recognizes that societal bias, discrimination, intolerance, and other forms of discriminatory practices can create barriers to students' progress in public education. The District is therefore committed to continue working toward identifying and addressing any barriers or practices that can lead to disparities among various groups in the school community, and enhancing cultural competence through the District's educational programs for both students and staff. We remain committed to promoting an equitable and inclusive educational environment that provides all members of the school community with opportunities, support, and resources that facilitate learning and growth. To that end, we use our mission and statement of beliefs detailed in the Blueprint for Excellence to guide and inform our decisions, areas of focus, and actions. This is always my favorite part of the meeting. It leads us right into our Avon Achievers, and so I'm excited to be able to start that part with Mr. Rankwitz, our Principal from the high school, and I see Ms. DeVivo joining him, Assistant Principal, is Mr. Kimball with you as well?
Mr. Kimball is at a track meet in Oxford, Connecticut, right now, and as we can tell outside, they don't end very quickly.
That is true, thank you.
But he does, he does send his best to all the recognition, students receiving recognition this evening. I have the honor of introducing this year's Class of 2022 Valedictorian and Saludatorium. I would ask Bob Wang to please come forward at this time. Bob is our Valedictorian. He has taken at least 10 AP classes, three UC, three ECE Yukon classes, following the two that are authorized for the Senior English Track. He's participated in National Honor Society. He's been a member of the Boys Tennis Team. He's on the Math Team, the Coding Club, and he's been a great role model for all students here. He goes about the school day in a very humble, respectful manner that many other students can emulate. So Bob, I just want to congratulate you and thank you very much. His plans for next year are undecided this time, but he has many options available to him. So I present Bob Wang, Valedictorian. Next, I'll ask Shelby Little to come up, please. Shelby is the Saludatorium for the Class of 2022. She too has taken many AP courses and the ECE Yukon classes as well. She's a member of the High School National Honor Society, as well as a member of the Leo Club, Student Government, and the Sertiman Club. Shelby has excelled at women's ice hockey, and as a result, she's being honored later this evening. I'll let, I'll hold that presentation for now, but also she will be attending the University of Massachusetts to play women's ice hockey for the Minute Women. Congratulations Shelby. I'll ask Dr. DeVivo to come present the next two awards.
So I'm going to ask Daniel Wang to join me up here. Daniel Wang has been selected as the winner of the National Merit Siemens Scholarship. Pursuant to an agreement with the National Merit Scholarship Corporation, the Merit Scholarship Award is sponsored by Siemens Foundation. About 220 companies and businesses finance National Merit Scholarships for finalists who meet their specified criteria. Daniel has excelled in all his classes at Avon High School, taking the most challenging levels throughout. Daniel has also been active in the Leo Club, Robotics Club, Chess Club, Indian Student Union Club, Science Club, Model UN, and of course, the Math Team. Congratulations, well done. And our next student, Max Newsome. Max Newsome has been selected as a winner of the National Merit $2,500 Scholarship. The scholarship is underwritten by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation with its own funds. Max has excelled in all his classes at Avon High School, taking the most challenging levels throughout. Max was the lead attorney for the mock trial team. He has also been active in the Sertiman Club, the Spring Musical.
Kurt Tomlin.
Thank you. Thank you. The Spring Musical. As an athlete, Max has been on the Fall and Spring Crew Teams. Congratulations, well done.
Thank you.
So Bob, Shelby, Daniel, and Max, we are so incredibly proud of you. Those are no small feats, and the long list for each of you is quite impressive. We know that there's quite the rigor in all the courses that you've selected, and then you add in all the social aspects and the clubs that you've participated in. We couldn't be prouder. We know we're going to hear more about you as time goes on. We are so excited for you as you move forward, and you're just really a testament to what all of our students hope to achieve, and thank you for modeling that for the rest of them. So congratulations again. All right, for our next portion, we have some citations that were given to us on behalf of the Office of Representative Alenny Cavros de Grau, so I will join Dr. Carnemola to present them.
That's all right, you're standing. He was, he was good. So we have the pleasure tonight, as Chair Schut mentioned, of presenting citations from the Connecticut General Assembly for several of our students tonight for their achievements in sports. First, and we're doing this on behalf of Alenny de Grau, Cavros de Grau, who could not be here tonight to present them herself. First, I'd like to call up Isaiah Adams, who is receiving an All-American Honors for Athletic Achievement in Wrestling. My daughter's somewhere at a track meet also. Let's do it. Hope for the best. Next, we have Carver Morgan, who's receiving an All-New Honors for Athletic Achievement in Track and Field. Wow, that's all right, thank you. Thank you. Good luck to Carver. Sorry, when we schedule these, we never know what's going to happen with athletics also, so they're doing what's most important, that they're getting the awards for. Paul Netland for receiving All-State Honors for Athletic Achievement in Track and Field. No Paul's here. I think it's Paul. Yeah, Paul's also outside of track. You're a good stand-in. Congratulations again. Sarah Grady for All-State Honors in Athletic Achievement in Swimming. I saw Sarah. And again, Shelby Little for All-State Honors for Athletic Achievement in Hockey. Thank you, and thank you for stepping in to take the citations for us, and we'll see them another time at school.
This is a great time of year to celebrate all of these things together with the students, so we are very proud of all of you. I just want to do another round of applause because I couldn't really clap, so. May is also our meeting where we like to recognize our senior Board of Ed student rep who will be graduating. So Sawyer, we're glad that you joined us this evening. We enjoyed Max on the stage in your place for a moment. That was a good stand-in, but we are absolutely thrilled to have had you working with us for the past two years. I've got to say that you've kept us on our toes, but you give honest feedback in a very kind and charismatic way, so it's always well-received, and we appreciate the time that you take to do your research in order to come here prepared to give us input, and we definitely listen and we take that to heart, and we look at practices after you've given that to us. So we are incredibly proud of you. I know this is not the last that we have heard your name. I am certain you just have so much charisma about you that whatever you do, it's going to be engaging, and I'm certain that you'll be successful, so we are incredibly proud of you, and I know I'm not the only one, so I'd like to open it up to other board members who would like to recognize you as well. Go ahead, Jay.
So Sawyer, I always look forward to your reports, no matter where we are, in Zoom, whether you're involved in some activity, you found a way to participate, but you always give us a great perspective on what's happening with students, and you do your research and know what's happening in the other schools. So we'll miss you, but I know you'll be successful in whatever you do next, and once again, appreciate your time and thank you for being part of the board.
Go ahead Laura.
Sawyer, your professional manner and positive attitude just brought so much to that role. You are going to be successful no matter what you do, and I wish you only the best and happiness and success in whatever you're doing, but you will be sorely missed because you really, you brought a level of excellence and caliber to that role. Max, you're going to have tough shoes to fill, young man, but it's going to be awesome.
Jeff?
Thank you. Sawyer, thank you so much for your time. You've been through us through some interesting periods. You've always presented a great perspective and sort of our eyes on the ground, and you've been a great voice for your fellow students. As a government teacher, I have to say you've been a great role model for your students as well. Here at your age, you stepped up and you took this leadership position where you were sitting at the table where decisions are made for your fellow students, and that's a tremendous obligation and responsibility you took on, and you served as an excellent role model. It was a pleasure working with you, and I look forward to hearing all about your future.
Jackie?
Yes, I just wanted to echo what everybody else said. I really enjoyed having you, and my most favorite meetings were where you were, I think, like in the middle of running a track, or like literally just finished wrestling or something, and you're outside and you're giving your kind of report, and all your friends are a big gaggle behind you, and it was just, it was, you really brought kind of excitement to the role, and I always looked forward to what you had to say, and I really appreciate your, your commitment. We should all be so committed, so thanks so much and best wishes.
Lisa.
All I can say is you brought a smile to my face every time you were with us, and I'm sure that you brought that smile to everybody in this school system, so best of luck to you Sawyer.
Go ahead, Phage.
Sawyer, I've just known you for a few short months while being on the board, but I want to say good luck in everything that you're going to be pursuing this year, for college, going into the fall, and thank you for everything you did. You did a tremendous job.
Lynn.
I'm with Phage. I haven't known you long, but I think I have to admit that you're the favorite part of the meeting. I mean, you really, I love listening to your part of the meeting, and you're so engaging, and I'm going to encourage you, I'm going to go out on a limb here, encourage you to think about education, being a teacher as a career, because you would be amazing. Thank you.
That's a great idea. Go ahead Liz.
I also haven't known you long, but I think that what you're doing at your young age is amazing, to get up here in front of all these people and say your piece every month, well-prepared, is really amazing and respected, and I know that you're going to do great in whatever you choose to do in your life, and I think it would be awesome if you became a teacher, so good luck.
And Dr. Carnemola.
Sawyer, I can't say enough about how much you've brought to the board and your commitment to working with us here, but also outside of these meetings, many conversations that you've had with administrators, with teachers, with me individually, and the perspective that you've brought, professionalism. I remember the time you said to me, "You didn't think I was going to show up at the board meeting in these clothes, did you? I have a suit with me." And I said, "Of course not Sawyer," and I actually was worried for a second, because we were together in the hallway, as you know. We'll be sad to see you go. I hope to hear from you moving forward, and as I've said to some of the others, we have a small gift from you on behalf of the board that we don't have tonight because it's taking everybody in America and otherwise way too long to supply anything at this point, but I will catch up with you before the end of the school year, I hope. Congratulations Sawyer.
And if you don't mind, I'm going to come shake your hand. We knew we had to get him in May because June, you'll be off and running, so thank you so much. So this is the time in our meeting when we have all of these families joining us to celebrate their students, and we recognize that you probably have lives beyond this. If you would like to stay with us, you're always more than welcome, but we are not offended if you choose to leave at this time because the highlight of your night has just occurred, so if you want to dismiss yourselves, we are totally fine with that. So thank you so much for taking the time to celebrate the kids, and thank you for representing our track stars out there too. And before I get to the next piece, I'm just going to make a pitch, if anyone is interested in participating in public comment, Ms. Moy has the list with her at the front, if you want to put your name on that list. Now moving on to approval of the Board of Education Regular Monthly Meeting Minutes of April 26, 2022. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Thank you Lisa. Do I have a second?
Second Deb.
Second by Phage. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, passes unanimously? Oh, okay, thank you for clarifying, that makes sense, okay. So you have that Jeff? Okay, thank you. All right, next is communication from the public. Ms. Moy, did you have anyone on the list? Okay, prior to calling ahead, I will read our description for how it works. This is the section of our meeting where Avon residents have the floor to share their thoughts and/or concerns with the board. It is not an opportunity for conversation, rather it's the board's chance to listen to feedback from the community. Please add your name to the list. If you've done so, so Ms. Moy can call you in order. You must state your name and address for the record. Each speaker will have up to three minutes to speak. In an effort to hear as many of you as we can, we must adhere to this time limit. You can certainly state that you agree or disagree with a previous comment if you prefer to be brief. Brevity will allow more attendees to be heard. After 15 minutes are up, the board may choose to extend public comment or not. No speaker will include charges or complaints of a personal nature against any individual Avon Board of Education member or individual employee of the Avon Board of Education, whether the speaker names the individual or not. Please refrain from clapping or cheering. Ms. Moy will be our timekeeper tonight. If you should reach two and a half minutes, she will alert you with a 30-second warning bell. At the three-minute mark, you'll be alerted again to signal that your time is up with two rings of the bell. We welcome your engagement and participation. Ms. Moy, if you want to call the first person forward?
The first person to speak is Megan Gainard.
Oh, I'm very short, but I feel that. My name is Megan Gainard, 16 Brownstone Drive. Just for a little background, I am a teacher of 22 years, and I've been studying reading for the past four years. I do have two children at Pine Grove Elementary School. I spoke at the last board meeting, Board of Education meeting, and I asked for Avon's ESAR Funds and Equity and ACL Work and Funds to be directed toward our current K-2 Reading and Writing and Spelling Vocabulary Curriculum. As you're aware, the State of Connecticut has passed the Right to Read Act that requires each district to align their curriculum with the best teaching practices, also known as the Science of Reading, which I'll refer to as SOAR from here on out, by July 1, 2023. Currently, Avon has not fully aligned our curriculum with SOAR, and we are in the process of adopting curriculum that does not seem to appear to align with SOAR, and I have some concerns about that. I have spoken with Susan and Jody, and it's clear that we're moving in that direction, but I do have some concerns. First, please use ed reports and/or the Reading League tools to evaluate our current programs, including Foundations, which is now rated as partially aligned with SOAR. Do not use leveled text such as, sorry, I lost my voice. Do not use leveled texts such as Fontes and Pennell for kids learning to decode. Change Readers and Writers Workshop, which are currently being implemented for the first time, because they are not aligned with SOAR, and there have been some cursory changes made by Lucy Colkins and her team at Teachers College, but they certainly aren't enough, and they have not been aligned with SOAR. While we have Words Their Way for Spelling, which is currently ranked 3 out of 10, why not use Fonte, while it is a phonics program, it's not structured literacy. Why not use Logic of English, which is rated 10 out of 10, or Phonics and Spelling Through Phoneme Graphing Mapping for younger children? Utilize screeners for kindergarten, because we know based on research that most kids who are behind at the end of first grade do not catch up even with intervention, so let's screen them in kindergarten and do what we need to do. Thank you. We need teacher training. Teachers want to do well. They're great, and I want, I want to encourage them to get the knowledge that they need. They can only do well when they are taught the best practices. All of this information is available at Curs Research on Google. You can easily find it. It's at your fingertips. Use it, use me, I'm happy to help. Please hire a teacher interventionist instead of a tutor for Tier 2 intervention. These students are some of our most vulnerable population. Please do the right thing and throw a literal lifeline to our children, because reading is freedom, power, knowledge, and equity. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Moy?
Next, we have two people who want to speak together, Ronan Hurnsdorf Smith and Sam Arvella Hofer.
Hi, I'm Ronan Hurnsdorf Smith from 8 Stevens Street.
Hi, I'm Sam Arvello Hofer from 17 Westbury.
And we come as concerned LGBTQ plus students. Ronan, I'm sorry to want to interrupt you. Can you get a little bit closer or push it down? It's hard for us, I don't know if it's hard for them. My apologies. And we come as concerned LGBTQ plus students from Avon High. In the past month, there were posters put up for Trans Day of Awareness. There were probably, how many would you say, like 35 posters put up? And there are about three remaining currently. Almost all have been torn down or vandalized or just completely ripped off, and when we complained about this, it was...
In addition to that, there, in addition to that, there's also been various posters ripped down from the general club posters for the GSA, in addition to one Sexual Assault Awareness, ooh, Sexual Assault Awareness poster put up by the Circles Club, which is for gender equality.
Yes, that specific poster was for Denim Day, which is anti-sexual assault, and when we voiced our concerns, we were told that ripping doesn't count as vandalism, so there's nothing that could be done, and as LGBTQ plus students, it just feels very unwelcoming. There was also an incident recently, I think last week, where one student tore three posters off the wall, crumpled them up, and threw them at a trans student, which has, which has been reported.
Yeah, so just to add to that, this kind of like behavior just contributes to a negative impact on the learning environment for various people in the LGBTQIA community within the school of students, as discrimination from even a few has a larger effect on the community as a whole. It makes students feel unwelcome and uncomfortable, possibly unsafe, and in addition to this, it just contributes to the worsening state of like mental health to those in the LGBTQIA community as a whole, as living in a discriminatory environment takes effect over time. And just to add, the school policy does have a very clear non-discriminatory statement, and just to add, this isn't a political stance, as all students have the right to having a safe learning environment.
And I just wanted to add that like, even though we were told that the ripping wasn't counted as vandalism, it still, it still sends a loud message equal to the vandalism that has occurred, because there has been homophobic vandalism and transphobic vandalism. It just, it seems very hostile, like walking through the hallways and seeing that all the posters that were once there are now gone, because there's, like I said, literally about three left, and one of them is duct taped to the door, so.
Yeah, I think that's all we got to say.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you Sam and Ronan. We'll make sure to follow up with you after. Ms. Moy? That's it for tonight, okay. Thank you very much for sharing your thoughts with us. Our next piece of the meeting is a Student Representative Report by Sawyer Hernandez.
All right, well, first off, that was, you know, that was beautiful, you know, I'm not really an emotional guy, but I was, I was holding back tears. You know, all this time, I've been here for what, two years? We have a lot of great memories together. I mean, obviously, board seats have, you know, switched and changed, but I've always appreciated what the Board of Education has stood for, what it's continued to stand for throughout all of the, you know, trials and tribulations of the last two years. The board has always maintained such an amazing level of integrity and, you know, fastidious care for the school and its student body, and I can really see that reflected not just in, you know, the dynamic with the public, but also in the dynamic with me as a representative for the students. I've always appreciated, I've always felt welcomed, it's always been a highlight of my month. I regret not being able to come last month, but I think that was the only month I wasn't here, because I actually really do love doing this, and I hope, I hope I have opportunities like this in the future when I'm past Avon High School, but I want to say I appreciate every, every one of you, and I, you know, you're all very near and dear in my heart, even if, even if I did show up a few minutes late, I apologize. I mean, it was a little ironic, but I was in the shower, I forgot, and I apologize. In regards to the school, it is May, whoop-de-whoop, as a senior, you know, there's no better month. Junior year, June gets stressful, but May, that's when all the fun stuff happens. It's really exciting. It's really exciting. We're moving into a transitionary period. Obviously, quarter force about to wind down when it comes into June. AMS, you have these eighth graders who are prepping for ninth grade. You have, all the grades are obviously doing their preparation, moving upwards. You had actually a few cool events that just recently happened that I'd like to make note of. We just had a big choral performance at a cathedral down, and I want to say Hartford, but I'm not entirely sure. I was actually in the performance. We had a great presentation from not only just the high school, but the middle schoolers and the elementary schoolers as well. It was beautiful. I heard a lot of great things, saw a lot of teary eyes out in the audience. So, no, that was really awesome. Sports are winding down. I believe track is actually having their last meet as we meet here. I wish I could have saw Isaiah, he's a good friend of mine, but, you know, obviously, he's probably out there winning medals or something. In regards to the ongoings at AMS, there's been an uptick in COVID cases coming in, but obviously, I mean, that's been well managed by the school. I was actually in the AMS or AHS production of Sister Act, which happened. Thank you for all of those who showed up. We had an uptick of cases there, but that was well dealt with through the school. There's been a great dissemination of COVID test kits, along with proper masks and proper information distributed by the school in regards to students needing to quarantine. That's all, that was done very fastidiously, done very well, and that's much appreciated by not just me, but also much of the student body, because comparatively, you could say that where we were two years ago, where we were two years ago, even eight years ago, was much worse in terms of just the infrastructure we had in place and in terms of how we reacted to COVID upticks. I mean, even as far as like Thanksgiving of last year, like that was a serious problem for the school. But now, I mean, the infrastructure's in place where the school functions pretty well regardless. I believe that's all I actually had on my agenda, obviously, because, you know, a lot of the fun stuff is happening now, so not too much academic stuff. But if I'm missing anything, not me, I'm not doing much academic stuff, but...
Oh, my goodness, we have a few weeks left, a few weeks. We got to walk you across that stage, Sawyer. Thank you very much, hon. We appreciate it. All right, next is our financial report by Susan Russo.
Good evening. Always a hard act to follow after Sawyer. A little bit more low-key here. So our financial report, the month ending April 30th, 2022. It was a light month in terms of financials with the school being closed one week, vacation, holidays, et cetera. We have some variances in our certified salary lines due to our end-of-year stipending being encumbered. In non-certifies, our paraeducators and interventionists, these small variances to clear the allocation of a district-wide paraeducator budget. Our custodians, maintainers, and bus drivers, as we head into the fourth quarter, we see upticks in overtime for those lines, as we have some of the fun events Sawyer mentioned. We have a lot of activities at the schools after hours. Our teacher substitutes and our instruction, we had some changes, some leaves that we had planned. We had a little deficit there to cover an unexpected early leave. In other expenses, we continue to see, unfortunately, the rise in costs in water, sewer, electric, and natural gas. It does not seem to be turning in the downward direction just yet, so we're continuing to monitor that, and we'll put forward budget transfers in June if we need to cover those variances. In contracted services, supplies and equipment, we have some school-requested budget transfers listed in the packet on the consent agenda to utilize some savings they had in some instructional supply accounts to purchase papers, some additional other supplies that they needed. In special education, we have $601,360 unencumbered. Those funds are going to be put forward to our escrow for the next year, in addition to a little bit more than that, as we wrap up those students that will be moving forward in the escrow account in the new year. We currently have 48 students in outplaced programs as of April. That number will be decreasing to 47 for May. And we have a general fund unencumbered balance for the month ending April 30th, a little over $2.8 million, or 4.59% of the remaining budget compared to the year prior of $3.9 million, or 6.43%. The main differential there, you recall from last month, I had mentioned the way we treat our medical insurance and prepaying that to the town, that 2% difference is due to that being fully expended in July.
Thank you, Susan. Does anyone have questions? All right. So moving along, committee and liaison reports, curriculum and professional practices. Jackie?
Thanks, Deb. I wanted to, I have a few to mention, because I was unable to attend the last meeting. I wanted to bring everybody up to date on the March 30th CMPP meeting. We focused on pieces of our blueprint for excellence. We were given a fantastic presentation that focused on school connectedness and explained what the most impactful ways to engage students are and how to maximize each student's experience in school. Now, let's forward to the most recent meeting, which was April 10th. We were given the new primary instructional materials that are being proposed. The committee approved them to move to the 30-day review period that you'll hear about in new business, and I think that also triggers the ability for the public to review them, that maybe Donna will discuss. There were major changes discussed for each area. The PowerPoint and the grade level units have been shared with everyone to review, and the committee moved the curriculums up to the board for approval. Additionally, we were able to talk a little bit about school climate work and the student-focused groups at AMS are being conducted. There is an annual school climate survey that's being reworked and will be conducted in a couple of weeks. And the superintendent shared information related to the social and emotional learning standards that are done by the district. In addition, Board of Ed members will need to attend implicit bias training. As any individuals who are part of a hiring process, we will be required to have that training. And that's it.
Thank you, Jackie.
And I don't think we have another meeting until the next school year possibly, unless there's going to be an additional one. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jackie. Finance, Jay?
So I don't really have much to add. Susan did a great job in explaining everything we discussed at the finance meeting. As she mentioned, we have the transfers as part of our consent calendar, but we also have on there donations, and I just want to thank the community. We appreciate you supporting the students, and those donations will help definitely in the areas where they were donated. And our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, June 14th at 6:00 PM. Thanks.
Thank you. Negotiations, we do not currently have any taking place, but we are preparing for probably July to start for administrators. Policy, Laura?
So the policy committee did not meet in the month of May as a subcommittee. You'll see under old business that we will be taking a second look and a second read at the exemption from instruction policy, which was discussed at our last regular board meeting. And shout out to the students who are here. I'm very impressed that you were familiar with some of our policies. So I hope we will get to hear more from you, and you will continue to come to our...
Thank you, Laura. Liaison report for board representative to CREG, Jackie?
We have, I was unable to attend last month's meeting, so tomorrow we are having their annual meeting. I think in general, there are ongoing concerns about funding, legislative challenges with that. They are established, we are working together to establish an open choice working group where we can share experiences and best practices among all of the schools that participate in that program through the CREG system. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Board chair update, I'll keep it brief. Really incredibly proud of the work of our students again. It's just so exciting to celebrate them, and we're always looking for reasons to, and they never disappoint. So it's thrilling to even pull in the driveway and have meets taking place while we're here having our meetings, and it feels so much more close to normal. And if that's the reason why we couldn't have them with us in person, then that's a good reason, because they are living the dream, hopefully. Incredibly proud of our students, and our staff are working really hard to keep that environment for our students, so we appreciate everything that goes into keeping the schools up and running. Just lots of exciting things happening. I know Sawyer was in the play here at the high school, and there was successful middle school play, lots of sports, and our students are really soaring in many of our sports this year, so very impressive group. So I just wanted to say that once again. I will throw it to Dr. Carnemola for her superintendent's report.
Thank you. We'll start with Mr. Medick in the hiring report.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. As you can see in the hiring report in your packet, we have hired a reading consultant for Avon High School. That is to replace an individual who is out on medical leave for the remainder of the school year and also has announced their retirement. In addition, we hired Ms. Sienna as a tutor interventionist here at the high school to support our tiered intervention model. We have a number of retirements, many certified teachers. So we'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate and thank Mrs. Rafferty, Mr. Byes, Mrs. Bowden, Ms. Cohen, and Mrs. O'Boyle for their many dedicated years of service. Those individuals have taught in our district anywhere between 19 or 41 years, so quite a wealth of experience that we are losing, but we wish them well in the next chapter. And also, I'd like to congratulate Ms. Karen Wright, a longtime paraeducator within the district who will also be retiring. We continue to have a few non-certified vacancies that we're looking to fill before the close of this school year. In addition, we've begun our hiring process for the next school year already. With the referendum being passed, we're able to begin offering contracts of employment for individuals, and we have various openings in various stages. We finalized a hire for a world language teacher between Avon High School and Avon Middle School for next year. We have final round interviews scheduled this week for elementary teaching positions at Pine Grove, and we're going through other processes right now in screening phases of applicants. We have reopened the Avon High School principal position to, in the hopes that we'll have greater opportunity to review additional candidates who may avail themselves of the opportunity. We did go through a first-round interview and a second-round interview with some individuals, and we are looking to expand on our pool of applicants for that position as well. We will have more hiring information in the June meeting, both for the closeout of this school year and in addition for some of the hires for starting next school year.
Thank you, Mr. Medick. And again, we are working closely with the AEA, the Teachers Association here in Avon, and also with some of our other unions and administrators in the buildings to plan one big retirement ceremony for our staff to all be able to be a part of. We've done that in some other years successfully, and so we're looking forward to that again, hoping that we can celebrate folks that are leaving properly. In the enrollment report, there's not much of a change from the previous month. I'd say we're status quo. I think we're up a net of four students. Kindergarten registrations continue, however, and as I say at nearly every meeting, until kindergarten registration is over, which is basically when kindergarten starts, is how it lands, it's hard to project forward. At this time, we have 98 registered at Pine Grove and 88 registered at Roaring Brook. So we certainly have a good number moving along, perhaps a tiny bit higher than we may have seen in total at other years at the same time. But again, to be expected based on the housing market and the turnover. I'll speak actually first to something related to what I just said. As the board knows, we sent out the information related to the building use and space and enrollment study that we are starting to engage in. We were able to get that contract with Cooperative Educational Services, which is a state of education, regional education center, which meant we were able to get a study done exactly the way we need it for a price that was moderated by taking part of it with a RISC. We had, as you know, put that out to bid several times, two years ago, prior to the shutdown and the rest of the havoc we had to manage during the pandemic. But we have known that we should move this forward for the last at least few years, because we've seen changes in housing. There's been further development in town, there's more development approved for additional homes and apartments, businesses, and so we want to ensure that moving forward, we have the best information possible about how we utilize each one of the school buildings, the space within them, the facilities more specifically also. As you know, we have a number of capital projects that we invest in every year as a town and on the board side, and we want to ensure that we are moving the schools forward physically in a way that makes fiscal sense and is the best use of the space for our classes and our activities. And likewise, it's always difficult to project enrollment, but through a professional enrollment study, we should at least be able to get accurate and appropriate, timely information about what it will look like in the next five to 10 years here in town, so that we can make plans moving forward for the districting of our elementary schools at minimum, because as you know, we've had to make changes many years in a row with redistricting between Roaring Brook and Pine Grove based on fluctuating numbers in the elementary schools. So we're moving forward, and we'll report back to you. We're hopeful that that's going to get us some good information to move forward with. Also, related to our strategic plan, you're going to hear about the curriculum tonight for mathematics and science. This is a huge project to both review existing curriculum and make any necessary changes in mathematics and science across the entire district, but also to finish writing many new curricula for math and science that had not yet been written. As you know, we focused in on the core content areas in the many years that Dr. Rusek has been leading the curriculum writing here out of the Teaching and Learning Office, and I'll let her speak more to that, but we are very happy to be able to present that tonight and to be able to move that forward. It was a huge part of our strategic plan, and I want to thank Dr. Rusek, Jody Krzansky, and our math and science teachers particularly, our department coordinators, Mr. Solerney and Jacqueline Lawler for the assistance in that process also. Of course, everybody on the CPDC committee. This was a very heavy lift, and I'm glad we're able to show it to you tonight. Likewise, related to our strategic plan, we are continuing on with our school climate work, our diversity, equity, and inclusion work, and as I won't repeat what Ms. Blaia said, but to point out that our focus groups did happen at the school already. They happened at the middle school on Friday to gather some information from students, and they took place yesterday here at the high school. And there'll be another focus group run a little bit differently here at the high school, which we'll talk about in a future meeting, that Mr. Rankowitz has worked with staff here and other outside providers from some partnerships and funding and through grant money on our side at Central Office. So we're looking forward, there'll be one more round where we have students of color specifically able to speak about their experience in our schools in another smaller group. And we may also move forward with one more date of the same focus groups that we had yesterday. We're waiting on the data from those. So that has happened. We are working on the survey, and we're hopeful that, of course, the information and the data gathered from both of those will help us to inform and support the work moving forward, as Ms. Blaia mentioned in the blueprint, and I spoke quite a bit at that CPP meeting. Similarly, today was the day that I was asked to present the work that Avon has been doing in this area to the state collaborative group that was put together by the legislature some years ago. There's a number of educators from throughout the state, parents, community members, and legislators on that task force, studying how to improve school climate, student connectedness, and implement restorative practices, which, you know, we've talked quite a bit about, and the law will require in the coming year, though we are ahead of that already here in Avon, which is one of the reasons that they asked me specifically to come and speak on some of the work that we've done in the last couple of years. It was nice to be there. I was able to see there are some districts that are further ahead of us in that work, that started that work before we did, and there are some districts that have only done it in certain schools and haven't done it in the systemic way that we have. And there are also some that are just fledgling, starting some of this similar work that we've done related to social, emotional learning standards and restorative practices. So I felt good about where we are moving forward systemically as a district, as a result of being there to talk about our work and also listening to the work of others. Also, I want to thank Tiffany Fox and Lori Arnold. You know, Tiffany wasn't able to be with us tonight, who worked together with Bloomfield High School in conjunction to put on a unified prom for our students to be able to attend. This is... This is an opportunity for our students with special needs to attend a prom that has a combination of peers and special needs students. And we were able to have a larger-scale event by combining schools together in Bloomfield. This is in addition to our own prom, so of course, our special needs students can and do often attend our own prom here in Avon. However, this is another opportunity for some that may not, for whatever reason, be able to attend our prom, and also for some that may have needed a precursory view of what going to a prom might look like. And so we have some, I think, that will have attended both, and some that will only attend ours, and some that only went to Bloomfield. But it was a good time and a nice experience for the kids. This is the first time that we've been involved with it here. So again, that's related back to our strategic plan and our goals around inclusivity and school climate. So I just wanted to thank them. It went really well. Similarly, just some congratulations that I think I owe folks. The play, as Sawyer and Ms. Shute mentioned, was fantastic, and we haven't met since then, so I just wanted to say thank you again. Congratulations, of course, to the students we had here tonight. We had a really nice showing for our teachers and our staff, from our parents, our community members, and our students for Teacher Appreciation Day and what we turn into a celebration of teacher and staff in general appreciation week. Might have been one of the best ever. I think part of that is our community and parents just wanting to support the work that our teachers and staff and administrators have done over the past two years. So I just wanted to extend a thank you again for that. One last thing, we had two students that Mr. Rankowitz and the administrators in the high school and the counseling department, Ms. Mooning and I, had the opportunity to be present while they were recognized today. We are not recognizing them here tonight, and I actually don't even want to say the names because I didn't check to make sure that we had media permission to do that. But I wanted to mention it because we wouldn't have been able to bring them to the board meeting based on the quick turnaround and also the fact that we recognize all of our scholarship award winners and athletics, whether it's athletics, academics, or the like, here at the high school. And we'll be recognizing two students that I had the pleasure of talking with again today at the high school while they were presented with the proverbial big check. Two of our students who attend from Hartford through the Open Choice program received scholarships from Open Choice. It's the first time, I think, if not a long time possibly ever, that we were trying to figure that out today, had two students be given the scholarship. It's not a given that any students that participate in Open Choice are given a scholarship at any school in any given year. We have two young ladies here that applied for and received two of the larger scholarships, and it was just really nice to be able to see that partnership with Open Choice and CREC going so well for our students. One of the young ladies is headed to Dartmouth, and the other is headed to UConn. Correct? I have that correct, if I remember right, Mr. Rankowitz? Yeah. So I'll leave the rest to Dr. Rusak when we get to the curriculum, and I'll speak a little bit to the policy when we get there. One more piece I'll put out. Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot I was going to. I had questions to answer from the last meeting. As you know, I try to do that when I can. We had a question and/or a concern from at least two of the comments that were made in public at the last meeting related to, one, a book entitled Gender Queer, which is a graphic novel for students that is geared toward young adults, but has what many would find objectional, just in the sense of sexual pictures that are in it. It does, it is a book that is geared toward LGBTQ+ information, students, adults, and reading and learning more about finding your place in the world in that way. But you may have heard them say, some of the speakers say last time, it is, as a graphic novel, it is mostly pictures. And so there was concern about, actually, they said that they objected to it being in our library. I just wanted to be clear and respond to that comment. Our library here does not carry that book for the reason that I said, because of the explicit material, not because of the topic. But it is in the Avon Free Public Library, which I would expect it to be. So I think maybe that was the confusion there. There was also a question related to a handout that was spoken to about a gender unicorn. To be perfectly honest, I had no idea what we were talking about in that part of the last meeting, and it took a little bit of time to figure out what that question was in regards to. But finally, after some digging and a lot of conversations with folks, it clicked and we realized where that handout had originated. That is a handout that was utilized as part of a professional development session for teachers, not for students, and it was one that we offered to staff in November, so that, I believe it was called LGBTQ+ Basics, and it was a way for teachers and staff to become more familiar with using proper terminology related to gender identity, gender expression. And the unicorn was a graphic that was utilized in that training, again, for the teachers and the staff that attended. That is not something that would be used explicitly in a classroom to teach the same because the content was meant for adults and to the best of my adults and making sure they were able to have those kinds of conversations when needed and understand the viewpoint of our LGBTQ+ students and colleagues, and again, use what would be considered appropriate terminology in referring to different aspects of the LGBT plus, Q+ community. So that's the answer to that question. Obviously, it was brought up by more than one person. You know that I typically, if I can answer questions, and I haven't already before the meeting, and those were two that I had not received before the meeting, so I had not spoken to them. I do, I did not have the opportunity to make phone calls to every single person that spoke at public comment last board meeting. To be perfectly honest, there were a lot of people, and it has been extremely busy. So unfortunately, I don't think some of the people that asked those two questions in particular are here. But that is the answer for any of you who were wondering on those two. Some of the others I spoke to related to social, emotional learning standards at the Curriculum Professional Practices Meeting, there were questions around those and what they looked like. There were questions related to our diversity, equity, and inclusion work. We've already spoken about those. And so again, I won't belabor all of that, but those were two specific things that I had been asked to answer, and that was the information that I could gather for you. And with that, I will thank you again, and thank you to Sawyer again, and I'll turn it over to you, Ms. Shute, for the consent calendar.
All right. Before I make a motion for consent calendar, I just want to put out there that Shirley Moy has put a second clipboard outside of the auditorium where the agendas are located. If you're interested in participating in the second public comment, you can put your name on that list. Next, I just want to reiterate what Jay said about the donations. We are always incredibly grateful to anyone who takes the time to raise funds and to put it towards our students. We thank you so much. So do I have a motion to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
Thank you, Jay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Laura. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Extentions? Passes unanimously. Thank you, everyone. Now we move to old business. This was a policy that did come up at our last meeting, Policy 6144.1, exemption from instruction, and it's our second read. And I know that Dr. Cardinal Mola has an update on that.
Excuse me, we are on page twenty-seven of the packet. We went through this entirely in the last board meeting. The red line version with the changes is page twenty-nine. I was asked by a board member about the family life education program exemption. Just to recap, these are required by the legislature, certain pieces of instruction, including sexual abuse prevention, family life education, AIDS instruction, and also that alternative assignments are provided if necessary for students whose family opts out of that instruction that is required by law. It is also required by law that we allow students to opt out of that instruction. And so we have regulations for doing so. This policy had to be updated. What I was asked about was the word on page twenty-nine related to curriculum, and we have changed the word to programs. I was asked about making that broader and speaking to board council about that because that is who reviewed and read this policy, and it was agreed that that was actually a better way to word it. And actually, Shipman mentioned that they may make the change to their model policy to be the one that we suggested in Avon. So always nice when we're on the other, we're on the other side of innovative policy. There's one more piece I wanted to mention, and that is on page thirty. I talked about it last time, the sexual abuse and assault awareness prevention programs. These obviously already exist here, but this piece of the legislation, the wording in the policy was missing when we were together at the last meeting. And so I sent that out to make sure you saw it before tonight. This is that top paragraph in red, sexual abuse and assault awareness prevention. I don't know if you have any other questions that I can answer.
Go ahead, Jackie.
So I did miss the discussion around this policy. I'm just wondering if there is, how are parents made aware of this? Is this in the handbook, or does this come out in the beginning of the school year? Like a permission slip, or is it that kind of a thing?
So there are certain grade levels and periods of time where these pieces of required instruction are addressed. Sometimes it's when, some of them start as early as, I believe, fifth grade. But when those pieces begin, parents are notified that that is a part of the required curriculum at this point in time, and this is what we will be doing. They're pointed to the curriculum and to this policy and to the opt-out forms should they choose to do that. And it is done anytime these pieces of curriculum are, and programming are employed throughout the K to twelve continuum, though, as I said, most of these begin, I believe, at fifth grade.
And just as a reminder, these are the policies that by state statute the district is required, and it is mandatory that we allow parents or guardians to opt out.
It is mandatory that we allow parents to opt out, yes. To be clear, the dissection of animals is not required instruction by state law, but allowing students to opt out is. So there are some pieces of education that are required, the AIDS instruction, the family life education, and the sexual abuse and assault awareness are all required programming and instruction by state law. There are a couple of other pieces in here that you see that we must allow opt out of, but we aren't required to provide. However, we do still provide dissection instruction in some fashion.
Jeff?
Thank you. Can you just remind us of the context? Because I know last time we had a conversation regarding possible other exemptions, we noted that the initial policy had a religious exemption, which had been removed, and it was explained it was because of the context of these exemptions. Could you just give us that context again?
Yes.
Thank you.
So the religious exemptions don't need to be a part of this policy. They aren't required by law. However, we do allow them, and they are spoken to in other policies, like our nondiscrimination policy, for example. So that part, legal counsel recommended removing from this policy, which, as you know, if we keep it in tandem with what the law requires and what the best practice is according to our legal counsel, when updates are made, these policies are easier to update, and we don't have to continue to redline entire policies that don't line up. So it was recommended to take this piece out because otherwise, we have it in more than one spot, which always makes things difficult when we're updating.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Laura, would you like to make a motion?
So hearing no other questions or concerns, I would like to make a motion to move Policy 6144.1, exemption from instruction, to have all the changes new and that were discussed at the last meeting and tonight added to the revised policy.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Lynn. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Extentions? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Next, under new business, primary instructional material recommendations.
Okay, so at the last Curriculum and Professional Practices Meeting, the committee voted to open the thirty-day review period of the proposed primary instructional materials, and they are housed at the central office, so anyone can stop down during the business hours and review the texts that are there. There are two English language arts books, one for grade six, one for grade seven, a calculus textbook, a personal finance textbook, and two history textbooks, one for grade seven and one for grade eleven. So in your packet this evening are the Curriculum Professional Development Council recommendations and the individual primary instructional material proposals for your review. And then once the thirty-day review period closes, these will be placed on the board agenda.
Are there any questions about them at this point? Yeah, Jackie?
So parents can see these, or the community can see these at central office?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Just come to the reception desk, and we have them all right there for anyone that would like to see any or all of them.
Other questions? Okay, so we remain in that thirty-day period, and then we will revisit this at the end of that.
Correct.
Thank you. All right. Our next item is grades K through twelve mathematics curriculum.
Okay, so at the Curriculum Professional Development Council meeting, or Curriculum Professional Practices Committee, I'll get all these acronyms right one day. The math and science departments had completed their first formal curriculum review and revision, and their initial adoption was back in 2014, 2015. So this is the first cycle of curriculum coming back to the board for a second time for approval with updates and revisions. So prior to this evening, you received a link to a document, and that had further details to the units, and it outlined each unit for you. It also contained a comment box to help outline, you know, was it just a change in a title or in the sequence? Did we add standards? Did we delete some standards? And if it got too convoluted, we wrote a narrative of what the major changes were and the overview of the unit. And some of them are new courses that are coming through for the first time, and that was indicated in the comment box. So tonight, I'm just going to really provide a broad overview of the revisions for each content area, and then can answer any questions you have. But to start, there are a couple of common things across each of the curriculums. Some of the course titles were changed, and some of the units were sequenced differently, which you probably saw in that grid. And then based on the curriculum review, some of the standards were added, so if we found that they were missing from the grade level or the course, we made sure that they were put in. Some standards were moved because they fit in one unit better than another unit that they had originally been aligned to. And some standards were deleted if they were not being assessed in the unit, because it's important to note that while the standards may be referenced or reviewed or even previewed in a unit, unless they are assessed, our practice is not to list them in the unit, or we would just have pages and pages of standards, and no one would know what the key ones are that we're focusing on for that unit. Any of the course changes, because I'll be mentioning a couple of our new courses tonight, have gone through the Curriculum Professional Development Council recommendation process and have been approved by the board. And any primary materials that you see listed in any of the units of study have all been approved by the board before they're listed in there. So for math, we utilize the Connecticut Common Core standards in grades K-12, and in grades K-5, there were really minor changes made to the units of study. Some of the titles were changed, and some of the units were sequenced differently. So as we started this work, part of the reason we resequenced the units is because initially we took the recommendation of the State Department of Education on how to order the units, but then after teaching them for a couple of years, we realized, and some of the teachers came forward and made recommendations, that if we ordered them differently, they probably would work better, and we have seen better results in the reordering of them. So that's why you'll see some of those sequences changing. In grade six, we realized that we needed to better align- align our methods vocabulary instruction in grades six through eight, so a new textbook was secured, and as a result of that, the units needed to be redesigned, but the standards and mathematical practices stayed the same. Part of this change also was the fact that the Connecticut Core Standards are K-5 and 612, and our curriculum previously had been written in textbooks for K-6 and 712. So we made the break and aligned six with seven and eight. It's the same textbooks that seven and eight had, so we have a much better pathway for our students moving forward. With that said, our sixth-grade teachers also work with our 712 teachers on some of the professional development days to make sure that that curriculum and articulation is in place for both math, science, and English currently. The largest numbers of changes in math really occurred in grades seven through 11. So it started with our students' really strong performance in eighth grade, so the decision was made to move Algebra I, if you recall, from ninth grade to eighth grade in order to open up the opportunity for our students when they got to high school to participate in more of the higher-level courses and electives. It opened up another year for them. Because of that result, it's like this domino going back and forth through this whole math curriculum sequence, seventh-grade math became pre-algebra, as eighth-grade math became Algebra I. After implementing that change for a couple of years, we realized that not all eighth graders were ready for Algebra I, that trying to learn linear and quadratic models in one year was really overwhelming and caused difficulty in the retention of the material, which we started seeing in some of the high school courses. So at that point, what we did is we took our Algebra I course and basically broke it into two parts. So students in eighth grade take Algebra I-A, and then they take the second section of it, Algebra I-B, as ninth graders, and we've seen a lot more success as we follow those students through. About two-thirds of our students take Algebra I, and about a third take the Algebra I-A, I-B as they move forward. Another change was in geometry. We had a number of students that really weren't performing where we wanted them to be performing in Algebra II. So we had the geometry teachers really analyze the standards. They looked at the student data from Algebra II and the pre-calculus courses. They looked at our standardized test results to determine that better sequence in geometry for our students. So it came down to the fact that they needed more algebra to be incorporated into the geometry curriculum. So you'll see that the studies, units of study were adjusted, and now they include the algebra standards, and they're added in kind of that spiral review, so they provide the computational skills and conceptual understanding practice over that year in order to position our students in a better place for Algebra II. So those are the changes you'll see in the geometry. Then finally, in Algebra II, like I said, this is a big domino effect moving on up, Algebra II had an abundance of standards to cover, and many of those standards applied to students who planned on taking higher-level math courses, such as pre-calculus or calculus. So based on this, we have three different options for Algebra II to meet the various student needs. So the first option is Algebra II, which is only offered at the college prep level. So this course provides students with the opportunity to strengthen their computational skills, conceptual understandings of those advanced topics in algebra, and it helps to prep them for the SAT exam, which is based on the standards within that course. Students in this course will most likely take a subsequent math course of statistics or trig and statistics. The other two options are Advanced Algebra II or Advanced Algebra II Honors, and both of these courses go above and beyond the state standards and prepare students for the advanced math courses, such as pre-calculus and calculus. Depending on which course they take, they don't have to take that specific one. I mean, if somebody takes Algebra II and wants to take statistics, they can do that and vice versa. But we have found that it's a little bit more seamless for students as they travel through that. So that covers all of the changes to our currently approved curriculum, because we only did the core courses last time. But additionally, for this approval cycle, we've included the units of study for all of the electives, the AP, and the ECE courses. So you'll see things such as applied topics in math, our AP Calculus AB, AP Statistics, the elementary discrete math in that packet that you received also. I don't know if you want me to take questions on math or kind of hook science in too, because science is shorter, and sum them together, or...
I think just for clarity, to follow the agenda, we'll do them separately so that we can take motions on both. Do people have questions about math?
Just a clarification. All the electives and so forth, once we get board approval, will be available on our public website for the public to review?
They will be available, not tomorrow or the next day. They're on the website. We just haven't been able with the company to link it completely, but if anybody wanted to see a copy, we can absolutely provide that.
And then just for my own clarification with the sequencing, if you will. So we're breaking down math into two sequencing, right? The geometry and the algebra, and it all depends upon whether or not they take Algebra I as a whole in eighth grade, or if they take that split over eighth and ninth, and that sets the two tracks, correct?
Well, the track then comes back together, because after the Algebra I, it goes to the geometry, and then Algebra II.
But even in the presentation, right, so like the split Algebra I-A, I-B, they won't have access to geometry until 10th grade?
Correct. It's one year behind the cycle, so to speak.
All right. But that, does that prevent students in the Algebra I-B track from getting some of those top-level electives? Is it just that ruled out because of just number of years of time left in high school, or...
Well, they can still take the electives as they're taking some of the math courses in the later years also, as they move on up.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Go ahead, Lisa.
And this goes into effect this upcoming year?
Correct. I mean, we've made these minor adjustments to the curriculum, and our electives, we have been teaching them. We have just formalized them in the same format, the curriculum format that we've written the core courses in that are moving forward now.
Okay, thank you.
If I may just add in, in regards to Jeff's question and the website, just wanted to make sure that we said again that we have migrated to a new site. It's been, it's an ongoing process. We're rebuilding the site to be bigger and better than it was before, but some pieces of that are slower than we would like. Curriculum is one of those areas because at the same time as building a website, we are dealing with an updated platform that the curriculum is housed on. So as you know, I think we discussed in the Curriculum Professional Practices Committee, we wanted to ensure that the work was done and presented first and foremost, and caught up online afterward instead of waiting until we could get both done together, because obviously, some of these we do need to move forward with in the changes, and others, we're just very excited to have done and to be able to have them available. In the meantime, if we have anyone who, from the public, parents, community members that wanted to see the curriculum, we have them available. We're just not, they're not all getting updated as quickly online as we would normally do, and neither is the website in general. We still need more time to finish working on that and putting things up, both that were there before and that we are putting up moving forward.
I appreciate the clarification. Thank you.
And Jeff, just a further clarification. When you clicked on those links and it showed the units of study, that's exactly what's on the website. We were able to run it off. It's just not ready to present yet because they haven't been able to move it completely over, and we also don't have the over 1,500 units configured to move over quite yet. We're working on that.
So the, the document we saw that was shared in our Google Drive for board members to review, that is ultimately what it would look like?
Correct.
On the website, where they'll have the units there with the hyperlink out for the specifics. I got you. Thank you. I appreciate that.
No problem.
So my question actually connects to Jeff's question, and that has to do with choice, and who gets, do the, do the students themselves and their parents get to decide what track they're on in math? So, or are they assigned the I-A, I-B? How does that work? You said about a third of the students end up in...
Right. It's a recommendation, so it's always a conversation between, you know, students, counselors, families. So we have some students that, you know, will start in algebra and then move down. We also have some other students that start in Algebra I-A, and then a little bit into the year, you know, see the potential, and we move them up. So it's never locked. Students always have the chance to move up or down, but we'd like to support them, obviously, where they're meeting with success, but also challenging them to continue moving up if they can.
But certainly, parents and students have, they can weigh in in terms of what courses they take.
Oh, definitely.
Yep. Thank you.
Good question, Lynn. Anyone else? All right, so for me on page 41, Jackie, I don't know if you want to make the motion for math, K-12, or if you'd like me to make the motion, and then perhaps you second it. So the wording, I think, will be nice and clear. So I move to approve the curriculum revisions for K-12 mathematics in addition to the electives, advanced placement, and early college experience courses that have been presented. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Jeff seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Distentions? Passes unanimously. Thank you. And so now we will move to grades K-12 science curriculum.
Okay. So the science curriculum is based on the next-generation science standards, K-12, and K-8, again, minimal changes were made to the units of study. Some of the titles were changed, some of the units were sequentially or sequenced differently. Again, some standards added, some removed, some deleted based on that curriculum review, just like the math course. For the core content courses at the high school, which are environmental science, biology, physics, and chemistry, the changes were similar to K-8 in terms of the titles, the sequencing, and in a couple of cases, we had units combined. So the high school, in some instances, had like 17 or 18 units and found that students were disconnecting with that many, so they clustered them together into fewer units, but it's still the same content and standards. Additionally, for the approval cycle, similar to math, we've included the units of study for electives, AP, and ECE courses. For example, the electives, such as anatomy and physiology, astronomy, forensics, marine science, our AP Physics I, AP Physics I and II, and chemistry. So in closing, there were not as many changes, obviously, to science as math. There were just the updates to the curriculum standards, which were assigned to different units and some of the titles. The bulk of their work was done in the electives and the AP, ECE courses.
Thank you, Donna. Any questions from board members? All right, seeing none, I will make a motion to approve the K-12 science curriculum revisions in addition to the electives and advanced placement and early college experience courses that have been presented. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Lisa. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Distentions? That passes unanimously as well. Thank you, Donna. That's a lot of work that has definitely been culminating, and we appreciate the fact that you broke it down for us and hopefully for the viewing audience as well, and we look forward to when they'll have the opportunity to see it online. But the good thing is, if someone wants to see it, they simply have to contact central office, and they can do the same. But thank you. I think our students will...
And I'd also like to thank the board for their support in this and the materials and supplies that you give our teachers for our students ultimately. And I also, too, would like to thank Jody Krzansky, our Director of Curriculum Instruction Assessment, John Solerney, our Department Coordinator for Science, and Jaclyn Lawler, our Department Coordinator for Mathematics, for their leadership. But every teacher that taught these courses has their fingerprints on these revisions, so thank you to every teacher in the district also for their work.
Yes, thank you, and we appreciate the time they took to come to our subcommittee meeting as well to speak to these pieces. It is impressive, so, and thank you to the board for approving these as we give our students even more options.
Ms. Shu, may I, through the chair, go back?
Absolutely.
I think I bit off kilter with finishing up my update, having never, as a superintendent, sat in a public meeting and talked about the potential of sexually explicit material and whether or not it existed in a school, so please forgive me. There was one more, at least one more piece that I wanted to share, which also was a follow-up to the last meeting. We heard some information related to community dialogues in the town of Avon, and I had the opportunity, so did several other board members, to attend one of those information sessions. I believe it was two weeks ago, and so did other, several other town employees and officials come to find out what that could look like for Avon moving forward. It was done very well, very nicely facilitated by Gloria Mangwell from Creck, which I think we've spoken about previously. I just wanted to put that out there, too, because that was also something that was brought up, and we heard some discussion of, from the public last time, and we were able to see that in action. So I just wanted to bring that to light also. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, now we move to our second section for communication from the public. Ms. Moy, do we have anyone?
We do. The first one is Chloe Knopf.
Okay, Chloe, if you want to come forward. Same rules apply as the first section. I don't think she's with us any longer. Is there anyone else on the list?
Lee Knopf.
I don't see her either. Is there another?
That's it.
All right, thank you very much, and hopefully they can join us at the next meeting if they have comments they'd like to share. Now, communication from Avon Board of Education members. Anyone?
I wanted to just take a minute. I was not at the last meeting, but I watched it, and I wanted to thank Dr. Carnamola for your steady and stellar leadership through some of these very difficult discussions and passion discussions that the community is having. And I think what I took away from that, that I would want our families and students to know, is that while there are really animated and robust discussions and debates about curriculum and how to best educate our students, I would never want our children to think that that somehow is a reflection of their value or their value to the school or their impact on our community. So that's, that's what I wanted to say for the record. That's important to me, that our kids who are watching how we're behaving and, and what's important to all of us, which I understand is different, is, you know, that we take it seriously and understand the consequences of this kind of back and forth and how we can really strive to work together. I'll also say, I went to the community discussion event or training, I'm not sure what it was called, and it was really a meaningful experience for me. I was grateful to learn about it, and I hope that we can kind of spread the word, because it was a really special experience, and I learned a lot about some of my other pals up here on the Board of Ed also. So it was great. Thank you.
Thank you, Jackie. Anyone else? All right, well, that leaves us with a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Okay, I heard Jackie and Jay at the same time battled that out. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I believe that's unanimous, so we adjourn at 8:28 PM. Thank you, everyone, for taking the time to stay with us this evening.